Okay. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting. Today is March 4, 2015. If we can get started with calling to order the meeting. We will have on here, it says Mr. Dreher or Mr. Dreher is running a little behind schedule, so I'll ask Mr. Zurich if he can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, if we can have a roll call, please.
At this time, if there's any member of the board who wishes to change the order of the current agenda in terms of business, if there are any requests to do that, Mr. Arthur.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. I would recommend that we move the entire agenda ahead of closed session. The last two meetings I was not able to attend, but I did watch them on our streaming channel, and especially the last meeting. It's extremely difficult as an observer of the meetings, those that are in attendance, the staff that are present, who, in my opinion, and those that are at home or here on campus watching the meetings, to follow the order of business that comes before this board in breaking these items, our agenda up in such a haphazard manner. You, at the last meeting, adjourned to closed session and were absent for approximately, well, nearly two hours. And to me, that's not doing proper to the business of the college. In my opinion, only my opinion, I think that to keep everyone waiting that long to conduct all of the college business, to have all of the board's special presentations that needed to be done, the board reports by our administration and staff, and then rush those items through was extremely unprofessional, and I would strongly recommend that we take into consideration the professionalism of our administration and staff, the need of the students and others that want to address this board on items on the agenda, as well as in public comments from the audience, and especially to those that may or may not be watching, or may be watching in the audience and on the streaming video at home, and move closed session to the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Mr. Jacendis.
I would like to object to the movement of the entire agenda, only because I've told students that we were going to be back at 7:30. So I agree with trustee Arthur's statements in being professional, and hopefully you guys can have this meeting, closed session meeting, and be back at 7:30. Because I also agree that the last meeting we had, it took a long time, and it is what it was, but I think if the board can work towards finishing by the deadline that is set, then we can have this meeting timely and efficiently as possible.
Great, anyone else have any additional comments? Yes, Ms. Perez.
I do.
I'd like to just request that item number three be discussed before, yes, because I know our scholarship recipient has to go back to calculus class, so.
Okay, so, all right, so in being mindful of our student who is here present tonight, we'll do item three, and then we'll come back to the discussion in terms of moving other agendas. Does everybody agree with that? Can we do that? Okay, great. Okay, moving on to item number three, is an institutional presentation of Sarito's College Foundation Scholarship. The board trustees will recognize the following Sarito's College Foundation Scholarship recipient, Ms. Alejandra Carranza, recipient of the Perez Medrano Scholarship.
Thank you, everybody, for being here today. I wanted to introduce you to Alejandra Carranza, who is our scholarship recipient this year for the Perez Medrano Scholarship. And let me tell you a little bit about her, and I'll tell you a little bit about why we ended up selecting her. Alejandra is a president's honor list student, pursuing a biology degree and applying to transfer to UCLA in the fall of 2015. As a pre-how student, her passion for helping others and interest in science have motivated her to pursue her higher education despite the obstacles she has faced. Alejandra is committed to volunteering for organizations that offer medical and dental services to underserved population and aspires to serve these as a health professional in the future. She seeks to be an inspiration to other women in STEM majors, an exemplary model for her daughter Audrey, who will be turning one in May. So again, we are very excited. We interviewed, again, a number of fabulous women. The scholarship is for women only who are studying in the STEM program, and Alejandra really just stood out to us, myself and to Steve Richardson, who is our foundation executive director, just because of her passion and her commitment, and really, like many of our students here at Sarito's College, really balancing her responsibilities as a daughter and as a mother and as a wife, as well, going to school full-time with a perfect 4.0 GPA. So again, she's on to great things, and we're just very excited today to be here to honor you and your family with this scholarship, and hope that it will help as you continue to pursue your academic dreams.
Thank you.
So, great, so, great. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I have to lower this. I just want to thank you guys all. I know that this is actually my first time attending one of these meetings, so I do thank you for listing this item first in order, because I do have to get back to class, but it's actually very nice to meet you, President Lacy. And I will let you guys return to your meeting. Thank you.
Congratulations. Well deserved.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone taking a picture? Thank you. Right, and your chapter. Okay, I will, thank you.
Again, congratulations and good luck in calculus, Mr. Dreher. That was a fun class. Ms. Perez and then Mr. Dreher, I wanted to make sure I finish your comments on, okay, Mr. Dreher?
I want to elaborate on what I talked about last time. In the city of Bellflower and the Bellflower Unified School District where I graduated from, we have a history of having a closed session before the public meeting. Also gives people more time to have dinner and to come to the meeting, but also, in Bellflower City Council, before they go to closed session, there's an opportunity for people to speak on an item if they cannot stay for, you know, after closed session, especially for students who want to speak before they have to go to class at seven. I think if we give them opportunity to speak who can't stay till we reconvene at 7:30, and then have people speak who come later, that would be fair, and that's a historical tradition in my community for, you know, Bellflower School Board and Bellflower City Council. And people have different schedules, and, you know, they want to have time with their family to have dinner, and then there's a lot of traffic coming to campus before seven, as I experienced tonight. So I would hope that we try this and see how it works out, but it has worked very well in my community, as long as we do have a time certain to be respectful to other people. I understand that as well. And then we can have more closed session later, but coming home at, you know, 1:00 and I have to teach school at 7:50, it's really difficult. So this is an attempt to help the schedules of board members and also staff, if we can maybe wrap things up faster, because closed session, it's hard to make decisions if you're really tired. And so if we can break it up a little bit, it would be helpful, and also help me be more fresh for teaching a fifth grade in the morning as well. So thank you for this consideration.
Anyone else have any comments on that? And I'd like to just agree with you, Mr. Arthur, in terms of, you know, the amount of time that it took at the last meeting. Unfortunately, you weren't here, but there was several issues that did arise that took longer than I think any of us would have expected. So in terms of being professional, I thought that we did our due diligence in addressing the concerns and the issues that were brought to us as board members. Unfortunately, we don't always have a clock on to how long a certain issue will take. It depends on the questions that arise, obviously, in closed session, and so I can't always, you know, defer how much or how much time we should allocate for that. I do agree with Mr. Dreher in terms of allocating specific time certain for the closed sessions. You know, this issue has come up since I got to this board, and we've addressed it on several occasions about having closed session early, having closed session in the middle, having closed session at the end. And, you know, again, we come back to the same issue. Everybody has a different opinion as to how it should be addressed and how it should be handled. However, you know, at the end of the night, when we're dealing with some very important issues as well in closed session, again, we're very exhausted, very tired, very hungry, and so I think the concentration for many of the board members was just that, that they weren't focused enough and that they weren't as alert enough as they could have been at 7:00. So, you know, in trying to facilitate a smoother agenda and trying to facilitate people being more responsive, more alert and more engaged, it was moved up a little bit earlier. Again, I would have preferred two agendas, a closed session agenda and open agenda, simply because we realize that things change. Every time I've given those suggestions, it gets pushed back, and so here we are again trying to decipher what and how to handle it. I don't have a problem with any preference. I do have a problem with cutting closed session short, because I do think we have some very important issues to discuss. And I can't, you know, figure out who's going to ask what questions and whether those are important to them or not in terms of getting a response, and I don't want to shortchange the college in terms, and our board members for that matter, in terms of being able to have a genuine dialogue, but something that impacts, obviously, the community at large, particularly our employees, which are a lot of the issues that arise in closed session. I want to make sure that we give them those opportunities to be able to hear the whole story and not shortchange it simply because they're trying to rush on time. So that's the only comment. If, you know, we're going to adjourn and come back at 7:30, that's fine. My only recommendation is that if we're not completed with what we need to address in closed session, that we reconvene closed session and recess that and come back to open session and move on from that point. But again, I think we're doing it, we're back where we started. We're kind of going back and forth in terms of how to address it, so. And I hear all the concerns. I was just trying to, again, streamline the process to make sure that folks are alert and not as tired to really address the issues that ultimately impact people's lives.
I just want to make sure that I understand the comments that were made around the table, that the decisions that we make in closed session, with it being at the front of the meeting, are more important because we're not as tired and hungry as we might make the decisions that we have to make at the later part of the meeting.
No, I'm just being mindful, I'm being mindful of people in general, and in terms of making sure that the issues that are addressed in closed session that ultimately impact one individual or a certain group of folks in terms of their employment here at the college, that we're as alert or as more engaged than at the end of the night. I know that sometimes we go into closed session at 11:30, 11:00 PM, and folks are tired, and that's just human nature.
But we always have the opportunity to adjourn the meeting if we can't make a rational and intelligent and well-informed decision, and adjourn the meeting to another date and time and continue the business when the board is more focused. But my point is that the observations that I saw from the last two meetings, and I've seen at this board table, that we, our meetings appear to be as dysfunctional as they had been prior to the accreditation process, and that was brought up in the accreditation report. And it's unprofessional. We're treating our staff, the audience, and the people that are watching, that may be watching our meetings rudely, and we shouldn't be doing that. Our concern should be how we conduct our business and how we deal with the public, and we're not doing that in a professional manner. And I'll close with that statement.
I'd like to go ahead and just move to item number one, because as agenda is that we would go ahead and convene to closed session and return back at open session later than 7:30 PM.
Okay, let's go, let's go.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, absolutely.
Before that. One would be, could this be an item we could vote on to see what the majority agrees upon? The other, my concern is, for example, our student trustee has told students to come at 7:30. What do we do in the case where we're back at 7:00? Does that mean we start the meeting, and what happens to the speakers that actually show up at 7:30?
Well, that was one of the concerns that was raised at one point, and again, I think the best thing to do, and my recommendation would have been that we bring this back as an agenda item as to how to really structure it, because, you know, if we do end early, then obviously this allows us to come back earlier. But if we tell folks to show up at 7:30 and they show up, you know, you know, we're back at 7:00, we have to wait till 7:30. So that's sort of where the balance has been, and this obviously have been discussions that we've had with Dr. Lacy in terms of how to facilitate everybody, you know, streamlining the process. But I think at this point, there's a lot of concern for different, various things, so I think it'd be great to agendize just how we actually want to structure it and move on from that point, because otherwise it'll just be continuing to be the same thing, where we start off with one thing because, you know, we go later at times and other times, and, you know, just have a structured time when we start regardless of what time it is in terms of whether we finish at 7:00 or whether we finish at 6:45 or whatever that case might be, so.
I've got a point of order. You've got a motion on the floor by Bob that needs to either have a second or dies of the lack of a second. So you can't have two motions on the floor at the same time.
Go ahead.
You second his motion?
What's his motion? Can you clarify?
To move all of the items on the, my motion is to move all of the items on the agenda ahead of closed session.
Okay, you want to do a roll call on that?
Discussion? Is any further discussion?
Well, there's a motion, and you can either vote on it or.
You can have discussion.
Well, go ahead, Mr. Dreher. We'll hear you out, and then we'll take a vote.
I vote, I hope that people will vote no, because we've already published it this way, to be fair with the public, that maybe this could count for the next time or something, if you want to be fair with the public.
All right, great. Would you please draw a call?
trustee Forrest?
Abstain.
trustee Arthur?
Yes.
trustee Almo?
No.
trustee Dreher?
No.
trustee Lewis?
Aye.
trustee Lou?
Yes.
trustee Perez?
No.
trustee Salazar?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So moving on to comments from the audience. At this time, if any member of the audience wishes to address the board, they may do so. Oh, one card. We have Mr., is it Aldamar Sanchez?
Well, there's two items on there, but I'll just talk about one, because I have something else to say also. The Queer Street Alliance Club on campus, we're actually signing up to be a part of the Long Beach Gay Pride, and we're actually wondering if the school would like us to represent them there at Long Beach Gay Pride, because we're going to go and represent QSA, but it's something we're going to bring up to the Student Senate, and it's something that they asked me to come and speak to the board, as if you guys would like us to represent Sarito's College as a whole at Long Beach Gay Pride, and we'll also be volunteering at Teen Pride to be able to outreach to the high school kids. Then, so it's, just let me know if you guys are interested in it. It's something that we think would be great for the school, especially with Safe Zone around and everything. It'll be really great for our school to be able to be a part of that. And then the second part, just from hearing everything that was going on right now, as a student that's always here at the board meetings, I feel that what Barbara Arthur said is something that should be implemented, because having this closed session at the end, it's very helpful for the students and faculty and staff, because we come to the meetings, and if it goes to closed session first, that means we have to stay later also. So I feel like if closed session's at the end, it would help us and faculty and staff be able to go home early, for us to be able to do our homework on time, because like myself, I have my laptop back then, I'm doing homework at the same time, but I want to be here and know what's going on on campus. And then also, like, if it was to be kept in the beginning, one thing that our Student Senate does, if something comes up and we want to hold off on it, we just table the item until a certain individual comes and speaks. So if that were to happen and you were to tell people to come at 7:30, but you guys finish early at 7:00, you guys can table the item to, until the speakers were to arrive, and still move on with other items on the agenda. So it's just something that we do in our Senate, and it works really well, so just in case you guys would want to do that as well. But, yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, next, we do have item number four, which is the board policies. This time, we have discussion on the following board policies and administrative procedures. Board policy 2735, which is board member travel, AP 2735, board member travel, and board policy 2750, board member absence from the state.
Members of the board, you have handouts on those board policies. I just would like to go over them briefly. The first one states that members of the Board of Trustees, including the student trustee, shall have the travel expenses paid when they travel on district business. That's the short version. I think you know that, and also that you need to do it in accordance with the established administrative procedures and policies. The AP that corresponds to that encourages board members and the student trustee to participate in activities that increase and enhance your understanding of college business and the community college mission, and also to advocate for and represent Sarito's College. And when you do so, you're also encouraged to report on your activities to fellow trustees at board meetings, which of course you do. I will make just a comment on the administrative, the procedures. As you know, when you do travel, I just want to make a point, it's not in the BP, but when you do travel, there's a pre-form, a pre-conference form, there's a claim form that you turn in, and you work with the president's office to do that. The rules of travel are on that form, that's what it's referring to, and I would just say, please remember to submit original receipts, which are critical for reimbursements that you receive for that travel. So those are those two, that BP and that AP. On BP 2750, board member absence from the state, I'll spend a little bit more time on that. And this is based on Government Code Section 1064, no member of the board shall be absent from the state for more than 60 days, except in the following circumstances, with approval of the board, on business of the community college district, with consent of the board for an additional period not to exceed a total absence of 90 days. And speaking with attorney on this particular issue, because it's a little bit confusing to read, if somebody's going to be gone more than 60 days, up to 90 days, that can be done with approval from the board. And then if there's an illness or other urgent necessity for somebody to be out of state for more than 90 days also, that can be done with, extended by the board. And then, of course, there's for federal military deployment, not to exceed an absence of a total of six months. Depending on circumstances, that can be extended for an additional six months, and if, by the board, and if that's done, the board also can appoint an interim person to fill that spot while that person is out. And to serve in the absence of the member. If two or more members of the board are absent by reason of any circumstance within here, and those absences result in the inability to establish a quorum at a regular meeting, then the board may immediately appoint one or more interim members as necessary so that the board can conduct business. And then lastly, the last bullet, the term of an interim member of the board appointed as set forth above may not extend beyond the return of the absent member or the next election cycle.
In the ABC School District, they had a member of the military who was deployed to, I don't know if it was Iraq or Afghanistan at the time, and this was a concern in the community about how to, you know, about this whole process. And I don't know if it's similar to what the school district would follow, or also how, like, if we have districts versus, you know, at-large, because it's no longer at-large in Sarito's College and ABC will no longer be at-large, is there a different process because it's by district, by community?
So I have.
You have to appoint somebody from that geographic district.
Well, if it's at-large, it would be, it would be appointed from at-large, or if it's trustee, it would be appointed by trustee.
Could that language be added now that we have districts? Maybe we can go back to committee. I'm hoping that this can go back to the Board Policy Committee to enter in, that they have to appoint somebody interim who is from that trustee district geographically and is a voter in that district, because it's not clear here. Because this was, I think this was written when we had at-large.
All right, so it's October, so, yeah, just before the election. I don't have a problem with this going back to committee, if that's what, if you would like to have this amended.
Yes.
Anyone have any additional comments? Yes, Ms. Perez.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody again. This is one of the accreditation subcommittee recommendations for us as a board to review each one of the policies, board policies as it relates to the board trustees. So again, I just wanted to thank everybody, thank Dr. Alfatall for this presentation, and looking forward to continue to make progress on the accreditation recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Okay, so all those in, I guess it's just a receive and file. So any other comments on this? But I do think that Mr. Dreher makes a point in terms of the appointment of the board member in an interim basis should come from the district that the board member is on leave, should that be the case. Okay, great, thank you. Item number five is board advisory committee activities reports. The board will receive a summary of the board advisory committee activities from the following. Just, we have on there the project labor agreement advisory committee, and I'm going to defer this to our city attorney, our city attorney, to our legal counsel.
Yes, the draft agreement went to the building trade unions and still waiting for their comments, and we're just trying to schedule time to receive their comments, so nothing to report.
Great, thank you.
Board policy met.
It'll be, we don't have anything this time, so you'll give your report before the agenda items next time?
Okay, but we did meet this week, yeah. Or was it last week?
Right. Okay, next, we do have consent calendar items. We do have items six through 16. Is there anyone who would like to pull an item prior to being approved?
I moved the consent items.
Second.
I want to pull something out.
Yes, Mr. Flores.
Item six, six and 16.
I'm sorry, what item again?
Six and 16.
Item six and 16. Okay, so items seven through 15. Motion to approve and, yeah. Can I get a second on that amendment?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item number six is a minute.
I'd like to abstain on item seven.
Okay, item number seven, an abstention for Mr. Arthur. Okay, item six is a minutes for the February 4, 2015, a meeting, and you pulled this item.
It's more of a clarification on how the report is being written. So it says if we want, in the reports and comments from district officials, that we look at the website available and the transcripts. So I'm wondering when that, when that change was implemented and if it's actually legal, because I looked at the transcripts and they're not, sometimes they make mistakes and errors, so I don't know if we want to make sure that that's what is actually being said. And I would prefer that we go back to the old model, because it gives a brief synopsis of what was actually said.
Go ahead, Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Flores, for sending us for bringing that up. I actually was going to bring that up as well, so I totally support what you said too. If we could just maybe perhaps go back to having just a brief summary of the reports given by not only the board trustees, but also the staff. I would be in support of that as well. Thank you.
Great. Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Salazar and then Mr. Dreher.
Yes, I also had a concern, I recall in the past, the board reports, or sorry, the report of reports and comments from district officials were inaccurate, so I was under the understanding, we were told, that they would be verbatim. And I do also have a concern to have to refer to the video and the transcript, because of transcripts, I've looked at them, sometimes they, they're not full words, they're not full sentences, so I would request that we go back to the previous practice over the past couple of months, and also inquire why now we're referring to a video and transcript.
Just one clarification, we have never had verbatim minutes for that, and it's even discussed in your board policy that you will not have verbatim minutes, so.
Maybe not verbatim, but a little bit more of a thorough bullet points on statements made by each person here at the dais.
Yeah. Can I speak now? In the city of Bellflower, they summarize, and sometimes it's very, very. sometimes it's very, very short, and it's not accurate to what I have spoken to, but you know, there is a video people can refer to, but I, I'd like something more accurate or more, instead of a short summary, maybe a more detailed summary to capture different points or details clearly. But yeah, the video is good to refer to as well, but I would hope the minutes would be a better summary.
If we go back to the summary, keep in mind you've got at least some checks and balances, because the video is as accurate as it ever can be in your own words. To have verbatim or anything of that nature, you have to hire a transcription. So, Andrea?
I, thank you for your comments. I just wanted to just say that it was my decision to do that. I, what I was hoping was with the broadcast meetings, that it would be a little bit easier for everybody to see exactly what was being said, because I know there were some issues with clarity and making sure that everything was included in the reports, while also trying to keep it brief in the minutes. So, you know, I'm happy to continue doing the summaries. It was just my intent to make it clear that the broadcast was available online as well as the transcript. So, but I can go ahead and include it both.
Okay, great. I would highly recommend just action minutes and brief summaries, simply because the actual legal document of the college is this. It's not the transcript online, and it's certainly not the video online. So if we had to go to court, this is what would hold up. So that would be my only concern, that we get, I guess, more specificity with as brief as possible. And, you know, I know that's difficult, but maybe just, you know, we don't need every single word on there, which is what someone had recommended in terms of verbatim. That takes forever, and quite frankly loses the gist of the points that are trying to be addressed. Think you'd make the major points and then move on, I think that's appropriate. But again, the video should never substantiate what the official record of the college is, and that's the minutes.
Keep in mind, though, the records are not actions of the Board. Your reports are not actions of the Board. Those would not appear at court.
No, I get that, but the minutes would be the official record in terms of what transpired at the meeting. So have done, I mean, I've done this long enough that I know that that would not hold as the official record of the college. A video would not hold as the official record. This would be the official record. So that, that would be my only concern. I don't know if legal counsel wants to address that, but anything you'd like to add?
No, I think that the way, you know, if you refer to the record to include the video, then I think it's included by reference. So, you know, I think the way you're proceeding to go, whether that Andrea's, when Ms. Witting has suggested, is probably the, the way to do it. So you have a more thorough summary, so you don't have to go to the video to look at it, and you have the video to back it up. And by referencing it, I think you're, you're probably making sure you include it so that it's got it all.
All referenced. Okay, great, thank you. Yes, Dr. Salazar?
As I would echo Dr. Salazar's comments, in that when I'm looking at the transcript online to see what exactly was said during the meetings, it isn't English at all. Really useless. There are not even words, and it's hard to even make out a sentence. And my name is misspelled, but then again, Starbucks does that anyway. So I hope that we, no. I hope that we could look into making a transcript in that so that we can understand exactly what was said. It does not have to be put in the minutes. I agree that the minutes are more of a tool to show what, to reflect what was said and the, what was meant to be said, rather than verbatim. But if we want to know exactly what we said during the meetings, then, and then copy-paste it to show, you know, what exactly we said during that time, instead of just saying, here's a clip of what we said, and you can barely make it out, or you may have, you know, some other disability, in fact. Like if you are deaf, you may not be able to hear exactly what was said. And, you know, I hope that we can bring that transparency to everyone, so that we can make sure that all of our meetings are-
Okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Zurich. Ms. Salazar, I'd like to move on to the next.
Yes, so just to clarify, I'd like to retract my statement about verbatim. My point was that previously, when they were summary bullet points, it summarized it perfectly well, and I'd like to go back to that. And these minutes, I'd like, I'd prefer that we table them and have include, you know, have them include the summary of the reports. Thank you. That's a motion.
Can I amend it? I would like to just make sure that if there was, if this has happened in the past, if there's not, I don't know if this is the first one, so if-
It's the first one, yeah.
Okay, any other comments? Uh, Mr. Dre?
When I was a student here, the court reporter students would come, and they would transcribe the meetings as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 16. I'm sorry.
Well, it's, it's a matter that's not agendized, so I think you're just giving direction. If, I think you've given direction, so I don't think there was any debate on it.
No, but the, the motion was to table this, to table this item, to bring it back.
Okay.
Okay, so then let's move to bring this item back with the corrections that were addressed tonight, to the next meeting. Can we, we substitute, yeah. Can I get a motion to substitute your motion to just?
So move.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Oh, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Next is item number 16, which is a public employment, tenured. It is recommended that the Board of Trustees approve the continued employment of the probationary contract faculty members as tenured employees effective 2015-16 academic year, with no additional fiscal impact. This is budgeted out of the general fund. And Mr. Flores, send this, you pulled this out, so any comment on that?
I just wanted to highlight the professors who are on this list. As trustee, I'm granting certain privileges, and, you know, it's an honor for me to make the motion to approve this agenda item, only because of the people who are on here, such as Damon Cagnolari, Professor Cagnolari. He was one of the first professors that came to this class. I took English 52 with him. And then, because I really enjoyed his class, I took English 100. And I tried to get English 103, but because courses are not available in that section, I could never take it. So I stopped trying, and I took Speech 235. But if I could take English 103, I would take it with Professor Cagnolari. Professor Davis is a great history professor. She started a new course in African Studies. She's great. I never taken her course, but I do ask her about, you know, the history of women and the struggle they go through, if I ever need it. Professor Mullins, he's a great political theorist professor. We clash on different ideas and what to do, but overall, he, he provides guidance, and I make my own decisions when it comes to that. Also, it's, I'm glad to see Professor Ramos get tenured. The students really love him. And there's also other professors that I'm not aware of, but I've heard students talk about them. We talk about professors, you know, which classes to take, and whoever, you know. Also thank the staff who hired these people, and, you know, thank you for that. And that was my motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you very much. Moving on to informational items, Agenda Items 17 to 20. Item 17 is a College Coordinating Committee Minutes.
Receive and file.
Great, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 18, which is a report on the scheduled RFP and RFQ releases for the quarter of January 1st, 2015 through March 31st, 2015. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Item number 19 is a 2014 Bond Program Management Update. The Board will receive a 2014 Bond Program Management Update from Business Services. Is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Just receive and file.
Okay, anyone have any questions on that? No? Okay. Mr. Alphatah, anything you'd like to add on that?
Just, things are, things are happening smoothly.
Things are great. Great, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 20, which is the reports from conferences and workshops. Trustees will give a report on any activity from recent conferences and workshops that they have attended. Anyone? Yes.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of attending the Community College National Legislative Conference in Washington DC, the first part of the month, from February 9th through the 12th. I'll start off by saying it was bitterly cold, and I believe that's where I caught my cold and missed the last meeting, but that's neither here nor there. The conference had a number of items that they requested the attendees to lobby on behalf of all community colleges. Of course, there were the, the standard, I think in all the years that I've been attending and been on the Board, they, they petitioned their representatives to increase availability and the amount of Pell Grants, and that was the lead-off item, again, and the federal funding for community colleges and, and students as it pertains to the level of fundings that have been received over recent years. They're looking for the passage of the Higher Education Reauthorization Act, the continuation, the Perkins Grants, community college and, and veteran programs to pass with that. And as we met with our elected officials, our congressional representatives, I brought up to them both Congresswoman Lucille Robra Alred and Linda Sanchez's office, that even though we recognize that tuition at the community colleges is a state's issue, that, and there are various states around the country that are allowing veterans, regardless of where their residency may lie, that they are allowing those veterans to enter the community colleges at, and pay those in-state tuition rates. And I propose to both of our representatives that they author legislation that it be a federal issue, that the government, in whatever infinite wisdom they can, make it such that veterans receive in-state tuition regardless of whatever state they attend. And both our representatives thought that was a great idea. They're also would like, asked us to petition, of course, on the continuation of the Dream Act and higher education tax provisions. And all in all, moving forward with the causes and that benefit the community colleges on a national scale. Miles and Maya and I championed Serritos College, as we did with Dr. Lacy and Zurich and I when we were in Sacramento in January, about the issues of facing community colleges here in California. All of those same attributes that we are facing here in the state, the issues of fairness in California, if the Congress passes the President's proposal of free two-year community college for all in the nation, and how that could impact Serritos College or California students, and especially Serritos College students, how we, well, all of those same issues that we addressed in, at the state level. I thought we made some very salient points with our elected officials. At the conference as well, it's a very different style conference from what we attend, we at, at the state level with the ACCT and the CCLC conference, I mean the CCLC conference. They don't really break off into various independent session groups. It's more of a, there are more all of a general session groups, and then each of the states have their own state caucus groups. And they'll have the general sessions, either breakfast, lunch, or dinner meetings, and where they'll have guest speakers and come in. And we had the pleasure, this conference, just to highlight a couple. On the afternoon luncheon, we had a, a session where Bill Kristol from ABC and Fox News debated community colleges and the issues facing community colleges. And they did that for about 10 minutes, and then it got into presidential politics, along with Stephanie Cutter from CNN, and it was moderated by Ann Compton. Now, to me, that, in 45 minutes of the two of them on the stage, talking back and forth to 1,000 people in the room, that was really cool. If you're a political junkie like I am, it was really a lot of fun. It was interesting, and they spent maybe 15 minutes at the end of the session in a question and answer, and I'd say all but one of the questions were directed at, at Bill Kristol. And he handled himself very well in a very left-leaning audience. And then the following day, there were many other sessions that were there, all very informative, very, almost all of them, in fact, all of them, except for one other, that were pertaining to what were on the green sheets that I was holding here, dealing with the topics that the association wanted the delegates to lobby on the behalf of community colleges. But in the afternoon on Wednesday, the members in attendance were, had the pleasure of listening to Dr. Jill Biden, Vice President Joe Biden's wife, who is a educator at the community college level. And she was very well-received and very informative. It was a real pleasure to listen to her address the congregation. It was very, very insightful, very, she's very, a very good speaker, and a very good champion of community colleges. All in all, I'd say the conference was a benefit. The meeting with our congressional representatives, and the networking that we had with some of the same individuals that were at the state CCLC conference, to continue those discussions along some of the lines that we had, or the lines of communications we had, dealing with our veterans programs. All in all, I'd say it was a worthwhile convention. Thank you.
Okay, well, I had the pleasure of attending the Alexa meeting, the LA County Trustee Association meeting. And the discussion at the time, they had Mr. Holden, who is on the Higher Ed Committee at the state level. And one of the things that was brought up and, you know, was asking that we supported something called dual enrollment, so that high school students have the opportunity to enroll in college courses beginning in ninth grade, which I think is a fabulous idea, having taught high school and, and seeing that most of our students perform extremely well in AP courses at that level. And so, you know, I always pondered the thought, why not just have them go to the college starting in ninth grade? So this, there is an assembly bill, and I don't have the number with me here tonight. I have everything in my car, and I'm going to bring copies for all of our trustees, and I will certainly do that before I leave tonight. But it's really looking also at the funding mechanisms. As many of you know, high schools and schools in general, K-12 receive ADA funding for student attendance. And here at the college, we get it for full-time students that are enrolled. And so they're looking at, trying to come up with a funding mechanism that addresses both sides, and allowing our students really to, one, engage in early college, is what they call it, early college, to be able to facilitate more college graduates, particularly coming from communities of homogeneous high, you know, high poverty, low educational attainment. And I was very interested in the fact that our, one of our local schools down the street here, Compton Community College, has an early college program. And the individual who actually began the early college program presented that night, and really just talked about addressing issues of, you know, logistics, in terms of, you know, having the courses being offered on the high school campuses for the ninth and 10th graders, and allowing half a day's schedule for the juniors and seniors, so that they're able to come to college in the afternoon, and take part in really the resources that are already available for them at the community college level. And, you know, very successful with the program. Some of the schools in San Diego are doing that. And I just thought it was a phenomenal idea, in terms of really allowing our students to, A, be enrolled in college courses at their local high schools, and be able to start trekking, you know, those units, so that they're able to graduate with at least an A degree by the time they graduate from high school. So those are some of the things that were, were, they were addressing that night. I thought it was very informative, very well-attended that night. It was out in San Marino. And I just thought it was, you know, obviously something that I think that our students here in our own communities could benefit in our own district. So it's something I'd like to have agendized at some point, to have a presentation about coming together, really, to see what resources are there. We're doing quite a bit here at the college in terms of our K-12 summits, and really connecting and engaging our local partners in education to, to really raise the bar, in terms of college attainment, and in terms of our students being successful at the college level. So I thought that was a win-win for us, because we're already doing some of those things that are going to be a positive for our students at-large in their district. But I think this would really close the gap in terms of bringing it all together, if we're able to offer, obviously, some of these courses. I know that for here at our own campus, we have limitations of classrooms. But for most schools right now, there is very little going on after 3:00 PM, or 4:00 PM for that matter. So making it more available, more accessible locally would certainly have a huge impact in our, definitely in our college-going rates. But that was, that was what was discussed, yeah.
Couple of clarifications. It's AB 288, the Holden Bill, and we have got a draft ready-to-go letter of support for it, and it was things that we talked to our legislators about. And Serritos College does have an early college program. We've started it last year, and we have expanded it to another cohort this year. And when this bill- And when this bill removes some of the barriers, I hope that we can continue to expand it. But we've got a program already going and it was a pilot last year and we're expand, we're doubling the cohort this year. So we're well under the way and it's a very successful program. Sue Parsons is leading the charge on that. And as soon as this hopefully will pass and sell through, then it'll remove some of the barriers to this. And I hope definitely Cerritos College does expand the program because it is a very successful program.
Well, I knew we were already doing quite a bit here on our own campus. I just didn't know to what extent and how many students we were servicing through that. Again, I think what they were doing was going at school district-wide, at least in Compton. So I thought that was great. If we could do, I know in our particular district, we've got so many cities and so many different districts that it'd be great to be able to start with one and kind of trickle it down to, to the others because I think, again, it's, it's definitely, as I said, an amazing opportunity for families, low-income families who may not always be able to send three or four kids to college because of the expense to be able to do it in high school at no expense. So I thought that was a great thing to be well-versed on. And I do, like I said, have, have brochures for my colleagues here, so I'll certainly make sure to distribute those before we leave tonight. But that's my report on that. Anyone else have any other reports? Yes, sir.
Just to make sure that, you know, we keep the pressure on that dual enrollment bill on our legislators, whether it be, you know, in the Assembly or the Senate, to make sure that we keep it going and not let it get stalled out like it was last time.
Great, thank you for that comment. Okay, moving on to administrative matters, items 21 through 25. We will receive an update on the Presidential Superintendent search process from Mr. Hernandez.
I have a request. There's a student just arrived who wanted to leave a public comment. So I don't know if it's okay or if it's, if the board is, would allow it for the student to speak at this time or before?
On this particular item?
No, it's just a, a public comment.
On this item?
It's not on this item. It's on the Safety Committee or Safety Issues on Campus.
Did this, was the student not here during the open comment or public comment?
No, she wasn't.
Well, we'd have to allow, ask the board if they'd like to reopen that particular item.
Yes, I move.
That we will reopen the item? Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if the student is here, they may proceed.
Hello, my name is Julia Martinez. I'm a freshman at Cerritos College and the female coacher of Metra. Metra has been working with professors and campus police in order to present our workshop on safety and resources. It has been brought to my intention that students do not feel safe and are large unaware of the resources available to them, and I too worry about my safety on campus. I have researched about the safety on other campuses. Castleton reported to me that the, that the decrease in crime significantly since their implementation of safety buttons. We also want safety and resources available to students on their syllabi, just how it was spoken at Faculty Senate, to instill disabled student resources on professor's syllabi. We are also asking for an update on the changes being made to lights on campus, specifically lights outside. We recommend and hope the board is receptive to our ideas we will be bringing forward after the Safety Committee this spring break. Thank you.
All right, item number 21 is Mr. Hernandez's presentation.
Good evening, members of the board. Brief report, I want to begin by thanking the Presidential Screening Committee for their hard work. Over the last few months, the committee has been meeting, spending a lot of time together in a very professional collegial way, as, as good as I have ever seen in any college. It was a large group. They had a lot of work to do. They essentially screened over 27 applications that came from hither and yon everywhere, really some from out of the state, obviously, and some out of the country even. They did a fine job in determining that they wanted to interview 12 candidates. They went through that process less than a week ago or so. And I've recommended five final candidates for the board to, to interview. That information has been released to the public and you have it, and additional information will be provided to the board. Once the board has its interviews, it's going to, the schedule, the tentative schedule is still for the board to make, have its interviews on the 15th and we'll move forward. But again, it's just very special when you have a very collegial group to get through a process that could be extremely difficult, but it can also be a very positive process when everyone comes together. So again, thank them for their hard work. They represented you well. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
I have a question. When you give us their applications and the other information, will it also include their experience in dealing with accreditation throughout their career?
I think they, all of the candidates that you receive address that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Yes, Ms. Perez?
Yes, thank you very much for the report. I would just like to request that in the future, that when this item comes up, that we could have something in writing as part of the board report for this item because several members of my community have requested details, more detail on what is going on. And I know the website just recently got updated, but when this item comes up, I would request that a written report be included on this item because many people do actually refer to the board agenda as well as the minutes. And since this is kind of the official record, I would request that there be something in writing for the next updates. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Item number 22, consideration to invite the President or designee of the Association of Cerritos College Management Employee, ACME, to participate at the board table for all meetings. And this was a request by Board Member Dreher.
Okay, I requested this before the last meeting. And at the last meeting, we deferred another item about ACME to the negotiation season. And so, I didn't know that was going to happen, so I'd like to do the same thing with this item. I'd like to, to pull it until the new negotiation season starts to be part of an overall agreement with ACME.
Could you be more specific in the terms postponed?
Pardon?
She wants a more specific.
I want to postpone it like we did the other item last meeting, that it would be part of the new negotiation cycle for labor, like we had mentioned in our readout.
When that date would be?
Whatever the board said last, the last meeting.
Yes, I think John Paul, Mr. Dreher is referring to whatever language that you presented at the, whoever presented it at the last board meeting, and that would be the same language for this item. I think that's what you're going to say, yes.
Which item was that? I watched the meeting, but I don't even call the Congress.
It was a closed session item, but it was a readout.
My recollection was that that item would come up when the item comes up in terms of, there was a request by ACME, I think, to increase based on some doctoral degrees and the items of that nature. And so, when that item comes back to the board, I think that's when this would come back as well. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I'd like to put the two items together to, you know, so it's part of an overall, you know, negotiation.
Okay, great. All right, can I get a second to that?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Item number 23 is the consideration adoption of a compact between the Cerritos College Board of Trustees and the President Superintendent. And this is addressing the Accreditation Board Advisory Committee recommended that the board and CEO develop a compact affirming positive communication, the board's vision, delegation of authority, and to provide effective leadership in planning, organization, budgeting, et cetera. And this recommendation was approved by the board at the October 15, 2014 meeting. Any comments? Yes, Ms. Perez?
Great, thank you again. This is another recommendation that came out of the Accreditation Subcommittee of the board members of myself, President Avalos, and Member Dreher. And again, I think this was modeled after other discussions that go around statewide between superintendents and presidents and their boards. So again, I think it was a very good document. We had a great, healthy discussion about this. And again, I think this is just another step in, in the right direction to address our accreditation report recommendations and to continue to build trust and communication between the board and the superintendent president. So thank you very much to everyone who worked on it. I know Dr. Lacy, Dr. Schilling worked on it, Dr. Mixon and Ms. Andrea Wittig as well too. So I thank everybody for working on this compact. I appreciate everything.
Any other comment on this? Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Item number 24, sorry, 24 is the adoption of a resolution 15 dash 0304B to recognize ABC Unified School District for its 50th anniversary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Item 25 is also a resolution to approve Resolution Number 15 dash 0304C in support of changes to the community college funding to include differential funding for higher-cost career technical education programs. Can I get a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. And then next is reports and comments from district officials. So at this time, we will go around the horseshoe here and listen to all the comments. We'll start off with Ms. Lynn Lofen from CSCA.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the board for allowing the classified to participate in the Presidential search and, and in believing in the shared governance on this campus. So we thank you for that. That's my report.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Mr. Namala, CCF president.
Thank you. First, I would like to follow in the footsteps of Trustee Flores and I want to congratulate the 15 faculty who got the tenure and thank the board for approving their tenure. I also want to speak, share a little bit about sabbaticals. I'm sure Faculty Senate President Michelle Llewellyn will talk about it too. The Senate passed a resolution requesting the board to approve all 12 sabbaticals that were recommended by the, by the Senate. Couple of things, you know, sabbaticals are, are critical for our professional development and it's not just my opinion, it's the academic statewide Senate believes so. We haven't had sabbaticals during the fiscal crisis and we no longer have the fiscal crisis. During the crisis, sabbaticals were suspended for four years. And in the past, we have funded all sabbaticals approved by the Faculty Senate, except one year, I think, during the crisis. And there are many faculty who have applied and all these years and are waiting to get a sabbatical. So in light of all these factors, I hope you will take this into consideration when you decide when it comes up for, on the agenda probably next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Llewellyn.
Yeah, so we did pass the resolution yesterday and I sent that out to you with an email last night. So I don't want to go over the email or the resolution. You have that. And whether you agree with the resolution or not, the resolution is the position of the Senate that doesn't require whoever it's given to to follow that. Board Policy 2510, the one that is actually written in the resolution, starts with the phrase that the Board of Trustees is the ultimate decision-maker, something to that effect. And when you make those decisions, the college community does honor those. And we respect the decisions that are made based on your knowledge that we may not have. We, faculty work more than 40 hours a week, most of us. You have required 15 hours of class time, 15 hours for prep and grading, seven hours for service, and another three for office hours. That even if you're just working those 40 hours, there is not enough time to engage in the depth of knowledge that you need to create innovative programs that improve success to the degree that the faculty would like to do that, to the degree that the college would like to see that done. You just can't do that in a 40-hour work week. And we can't do this without those resources of time and money that we would really respectfully request that you grant. As Dr. Namala said, it was suspended from 2010 to 2014 for budget reasons. And faculty clearly understand the budget, when the budget is good and the budget is, is bad. And we would not want limited resources to go to anyone but students first. But we believe that the financial stability that we are expecting this year is good enough really to make an investment in our students and to bring that innovation and increase success to Cerritos College. I hear the board, week after week, asking for improved success and innovation and improvement in programs and improvement in, in pedagogy. But again, without those resources, specifically sabbaticals, it's difficult for us to actually make large strides in getting that innovation and its success to come to Cerritos. So we are asking for you to consider all 12, as Dr. Namala has also stated and, and was in the email last night, the typically past practice is that the number that the Senate recommends is the number that has been sent when the, the budget is stable. That is one, we're asking for 12. That is one less than the 5% maximum that the contract says. We cannot have more than that. That would be 13 and this is 12. So again, we would respectfully request that you consider that and thank you.
Mr. Flores, just send these.
Thank you. Just echo, just a little bit of what the faculty are saying, just remind the board and the people here that faculty learning conditions are also student learning conditions. And with that being said, I'd just like to comment on the Safety Committee. I don't, I haven't done my research, but I would just like to get some clarification on what the process is in moving the Safety Committee to a time where students can be there. I realize that it's during spring break, so if we want to, you know, get as much student input, we can work towards moving that date. Also, I'd like to thank Student Services. I've been walking around campus and I see a lot of different fairs for financial aid and just letting students know about the services we have here on campus. Thank you for that. In terms of Senate and ACC, our student body president has resigned. It's unfortunate, but he is a student too and we all, as many other students, we go through difficulties, you know, and, and different avenues. And I wish that, you know, he, much success for him. He's a great student and we also, just today, we saw, we voted a new vice president, but it's unfortunate that, you know, what happened. But I, again, I support his decision and wish nothing but success to him. On another issue that has been pressing in Student Senate and ACC overall is the issue about the student affairs positions and how that relates to the roles of the president and vice president. We still haven't came to a conclusion, but it has been a very hot-blooded issue. And I will remain objective and just provide a report when that decision or when that issue is resolved at the student level. Also, I would like to thank Armando Soto. I participated in the SION, the video orientation. I hope the students, you know, look at those videos and they do take those into consideration. You know, I mean, just talking with their students, you know, it's habitual what we do, where we just click next, next, next and try to get it over with, you know. But hopefully the students do look at those and they learn from those. I think they're great and hopefully they're updated and they're, we can connect with those videos. It's, it's nice to have one-on-one interactions, but because of the financial state of our education, it's difficult, but this will do and hopefully they work. Thank you for that too. And that's my report.
Great, thank you. Board Member Lewis.
This morning, I had the privilege and honor of addressing Eastwood Elementary right on the corner of Rosecrans and Beach Boulevard. And I talked for about five or 10 minutes listening to their questions, mostly fifth graders, about what college is like. And they also, at the same time, were celebrating Dr. Seuss Day, so naturally I wore a Dr. Seuss hat to blend in. So they had a lot of great questions, talking about what it's like to be in college, how can I know what classes to take? And of course, I told them that Cerritos Community College is probably a good school that you should think about. And they're like, yeah, yeah, we should think about it. So they will in about 10 years. And I would also like to extend congratulations to the leading candidates from the two city council elections yesterday. In La Mirada, the leading candidates so far are Ed Eng, Steve DeRusse, and Larry Moles, with the last two being- with the last two being incumbents reelected. And in Saritos, Mayor Mark Pulito, former mayor Jim Edwards, and challenger Nourash Solanki. There are still provisionals to be counted, but barring any changes, those are the three leading candidates and we welcome them to our community and hope to extend a hand of partnership in keeping Saritos and all its southeast LA county communities great. Thank you.
Great, Mr. Arthur.
Thank you. Having been in Washington and then ill for a week after that, I think it was due to the cold weather. It was really cold, people, I'm not kidding. I think it was six degrees the day we left. But after recuperation and getting over that head cold, I was able to attend the two State of the City Addresses, both in Norwalk and in Downey, just this afternoon. And I had the pleasure of sitting next to Karina Chacon, who is the field representative for Assemblymember Christina Garcia. She shared with me some news that I'm going to share with you. Dr. Lacy has been selected as Assemblywoman Christina Garcia's Woman of the Year. And so a nice round of applause is due for Dr. Linda Lacy. Congratulations, Linda. And well-deserved. Also, at the luncheon this afternoon was Benjamin Deco, who is the executive director, president and executive director for the Columbia Memorial Space Center. And I had mentioned this before, that I had met him a couple of months ago, I think it was. And on April 9th, the center is hosting a very large STEM program and inviting the community, schools that have STEM programs, and they've invited Saritos to participate. And I'll give you their card, Joanna, that maybe you might be in touch with them and see what they're, what he's talking about and maybe some of our students, maybe we can have a booth there, participate in whatever way that we can. It's going to be very interesting, I am sure. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend, I'll be out of state on the 9th. And actually, I'm going to miss that board meeting that week. Just to give you a point of note, I'll be out of state all week. Thank you.
Less than 60 days? Less than 60 days? Less than 60 days?
Great, thank you. I had a couple of things I wanted to report on. I actually forgot last time to mention that I attended our Assemblywoman Christina Garcia's Education Roundtable on behalf of the college. She had that probably about a month ago now, but it was another really good event that she hosts them a couple of times a year. And I was fortunate to represent the college there, along with several of our K-12 partners, as well as our, as our sister Rio Hondo College. And two hot issues that we talked about as community college leaders were, of course, dual enrollment and the statewide facilities bond. Again, so again, it was, it's definitely a big issue, Rio Hondo as well too, especially the facilities bond, because they have huge implications on their future building program as well. So again, she was very appreciative of Saritos College being there and as she's told many of us, wants to be continually involved in the college and whatever assistance that we can, she can give us, she's more than willing to help. I also, last week, attended Ms. Maya Walker's presentation in the great city of Hawaiian Gardens. She did a fabulous overview to the city council, as well as probably about 25 young women who were there for a model government day, and they were there to be celebrated as well. So it was, again, it was a great presentation, long time in the coming. I think several of the council members were very impressed by the variety of programs that we have at Saritos College. And we're just very pleased to have our college represented there and their city. So again, I just wanted to thank Maya for that. I also wanted to have everybody put on their calendar, their 51st birthday celebration is coming up on April the 11th. So it's always a wonderful day, we start with the parade and then we have a day-long, actually, it's a weekend-long celebration of the city, so this year will be our 51st celebration. I also wanted to tell everybody, another thing going on in the city of Lakewood, as many of you know, our Delval Park is under construction and we are actually having the fighter plane refurbished and it'll be put back in there. But one of the things that we are doing in Lakewood is we are selling commemorative bricks. They're $100 and any individual organization, business can purchase them and they will be actually used as they rebuild the playground and rebuild the memorial in time for Memorial Day. So we're very excited about that, that opportunity there in the city of Lakewood. And I think that's about it. So again, also just wanted to reiterate two things. Thank you again to the CEO Screening Committee. It was a long two days, but it was really a pleasure to meet all the candidates and especially to hear from all of our staff and our faculty and students and community members of what they're really looking for in our next college president. So again, I want to thank everybody, many of you were here and spent two long days and, you know, thank God Alina, I know she had a big commitment to juggle, as well as Miles too. I mean, they're both, you know, students and student leaders, but they were very good participants on the committee and really good to have the students' voice on that. So I wanted to thank the managers, Dr. Shilling, and my fellow board members, because again, I do think it was a great opportunity for us to help select our new president. And also just wanted to congratulate, as what Mr. Lewis said, our three council members in the city of Saritos. Congratulations to Mayor Mark Pulito, very excited for him, as well as the other two candidates, Mayor Jim Edwards and Nourash Solanki. So again, great opportunity for us to continue to work with our, with our city partners. Thank you.
The first thing on the federal-state update was, February 27th was their deadline to submit bills and there were 1,700 bills submitted, so they're going to have a busy year. Again, AB 288 Holden Bill is, it's called the Career and College Access Pathways Bill. And so we are, we actually got it drafted, so we're drafting a letter of support and we will be sending it to all of our targeted legislators, including the LA District Group. I did have one question with the board. A lot of times, letters of support are just as, I think, important as the resolution. So would you, are you fine with that? If I just give you a copy of that? Okay, great. I want to tell you that I spent the afternoon reading the LAO report, which is the Legislative Analyst Report, and it's about 87 pages long, but it's very good, it's very thorough. And I've given you a couple of excerpts from it, just to let you know the type of material that's in it. And one of them was the notable difference between the funded and unfunded at college. There was one that talked about the student shared education and compares the UCs, the CSUs, and community colleges. And then it has the California tuition fees regarding, in comparison with the nation. So this is just a few of the items on there, if you want to have some leisurely reading, go read the report. One of the things that they pointed out, everything is, there's not anything that's really glaring on community colleges, with the exception of maybe one thing we want to be aware of. The, they're not necessarily saying, do all of the access money for community colleges, because the enrollment across the state is not meeting the enrollment targets, it's flat or declining. And they have indicated that it's going to be a steady decline in the traditional college-age students over the next five years. They're not saying, take it away, they're saying, perhaps, put it in different places, which would be fine. In other words, you don't have to grow, if you're not growing, you wouldn't lose it. So we'll see, we'll just kind of watch that. Locally, there was a very nice article about our automotive technology program that appeared and it was, it hit the chancellor's website, so that was a good one. It talked about all of the alternative-fueled, high-performance programs that we have, and we have over 1,000 students in that program, so that was a great acknowledgement for the college. I've been invited to be a table facilitator for the Association of California Community College Administrators Network Breakfast on March 13th, so that will be kind of fun. College announcement, Hall of Fame's tomorrow, it's sold out, so, too bad. We're excited. The groundbreaking ceremony for the CIS Math, you've got a flyer on that, March 11th at 4:00. And one of the most unique things I think I've ever seen, when we, when I talk about the 3CTA, it's the, it's really the Statewide Athletic Association Spring Conference. And each affiliate group has their own awards that they give. As an example, the athletic directors give an award, the trainers, the physical educators, the health educators. And this year, it's rather embarrassing when I read it, but Saritos College is literally receiving every award. Every single one. So I will be at the luncheon that day, standing up and clapping several times, but it's like winning all of the Oscars, we swept it. Congratulations to Dan Smith, Brian Cable, our trainer and classified staff, Nai Bueno, I mentioned last time, and Carrie Edwards. So this is just totally amazing. I mean, you couldn't go out on a better year, right? Women's History Month, I just want you to make sure you're aware of that, we're in March, so check the campus connection and your Daily Falcon events. And that's the end of my report, thank you.
Again, thank you to all the folks who participated in the search committee for our new college president. It's a lot of work, a lot of hours, long days, hopefully we fed you well. But, you know, the finalists that are coming to the board, just based on what's on the website and what was sent to us, look great. So thank you for all the effort, the time, commitment. Genuinely, as they say, reviewing everything and asking the questions and probing to make sure that college gets the best president. So appreciate that. And then, you know, Mr. Zurich mentioned just the elections last night, several elections going on in our local communities. Just congratulations to all the candidates who won and all those candidates who had the courage to run for office, because it does take quite a bit of time, personal sacrifice, and definitely a commitment to want to serve. So congratulations to everyone who did win last night. There were several elections going on across the various cities. In my city, for example, we did have, we did not have a city election this year, so I didn't have to count ballots last night. But we did have the LA Community College District Elections for District 5, which covers part of South Gate, and also the LA Community College District. And some great candidates that were there. Again, congratulations to those who are going off onto the runoff for both the LA Community College District and LA Unified School District. And then that's pretty much, that concludes my report. Congratulations to tomorrow's honorees and winners.
The member of, I am a member of a seroptimist club at Sarito and Artesia. And this club hold a fundraiser event every year. And this, this year, the event, the theme is Kentucky Derby. So we were required to wear a hat. And I asked, you know, can I wear my tennis hat? They said, hmm, that's not, so I decided not to wear. But anyway, I saw so many hats and it's fun. So next, and we raised about 42,000 for the local, you know. So hopefully next year, you can join us, you know, wear your fancy hat too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Moore.
Good evening. Funding for community colleges, schools, and cities relies a lot on local property tax revenues and the values of our homes and businesses. And as a homeowner and a business owner, I feel that the property values in my hometown of Balthar are devalued and I've been working very hard to increase economic development and also getting our redevelopment agency to work better. And so I entered Christina, Assemblywoman Christina Garcia's There Ought to Be a Law contest and I wrote a proposed bill for helping with surplus land and buildings. And I didn't win, but I received honorable mention and my idea has been forwarded to the state speaker of the assembly, to her redevelopment working group, so we can better manage the vacant buildings that we have 16 years to dispose of or to redevelop. So I'm working with the speaker's office, I'm excited about that, to improve the redevelopment process in Balthar and also would help the whole state and all of our 14 cities that have redevelopment zones. And I worked yesterday with the LA County Chair of the Redevelopment Agency, and her name is, I thought she was, in the paper, they said she was Connie Chung, the TV news reporter, but it was inaccurate. So I thought I was going to meet Connie Chung or talk to her, but it's another fortunate name, Connie Chung. And so I'm working with her, it's exciting. And I want to increase the property values so we can fund more sabbaticals, raises, parity pay, more classes, so every student can get the class they need so they can graduate on time. So I'm working from the, you know, the ground up, literally, to make sure things work more properly in my local district at my level, because my father wrote the first redevelopment plan for Balthar. And it was never, his dream was never fully realized. So I'm working from the ground up the best I can to help you. But I don't know if we have, you know, currently, all the money to do everything, but we can do part of it, phase it in. I still got to balance the budget for my community. So I'm working on that from the ground up and working with state officials and county officials. I also attended Christina Garcia's community swearing-in, met with Downey Unified officials. This week, I met with Congresswoman Linda Sanchez's staff member for Balthar, Irma, to explain the developments about our special election for election reform in Balthar and working with State Senator Tony Mendoza and Assemblywoman Christina Garcia on informing voters of their voting rights as we design the council, the five councilmatic districts start, which will soon be starting in April. And we'll have five public, no, I'm sorry, three public hearings, but starting around April. So we're really excited about the possibilities to improving property values to bring more money to the college and the schools and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I have a couple of comments on sabbaticals. I had the pleasure of meeting with Michelle Llewellyn, our Faculty Senate President, as well as Dr. Namala, our CCFF president. And I learned, which I didn't know before, the rigorous process that sabbaticals go through. I did not know they went through, obviously, the sabbatical committee, but also then Faculty Senate, the VP of Academic Affairs, the president, and then the board. So in my opinion, I'd like to honor our shared governance process and know that faculty, professional development is an important ingredient to student success. And I acknowledge that we haven't had sabbaticals for four years, from 2010 to 2014. We had a limited number of sabbaticals last year due to budgetary concerns. Now with the improved budget, Dr. Al Fattel has ensured us that we're going to have a great budget year. So I would like to request, if this item does come to the board, that we have options and we look at honoring the Faculty Senate recommendation and looking at the cost of that. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I want to thank trustee Flores Resendez for acknowledging the tenured faculty. I think that was a wonderful gesture and we probably need to make more of a deal about it, because it's a great accomplishment and you're absolutely right, this is a wonderful group that we're welcoming in. So thank you for doing that, it's very thoughtful. I also wanted to let you know that our K-16 Bridge Program, again, is off to a blazing start. I mean, the response has just been overwhelming and last week, or I'm sorry, this week, Norwalk High had 190 students assess for Saritos, they've already applied. We thought we would maybe have a cohort of 500 for next year and this is, we're guaranteeing them enrollment and giving them education plans and creating a cohort for this group. And we think we're on pace for about 750 students. So it's just exceeded our expectations and we're very, very happy about it. And last but not least, I just wanted to acknowledge ACME, our managers. We have a tremendous group of managers and it's my pleasure to work with them each and every day. And I'm sorry that we didn't consider the agenda item that was on this agenda to have them at the seat of the table. I just want to ask that when we do bring this back, that the board consider this seriously. They don't have a voice, so that's why I'm saying this. And they deserve to be treated with the same respect that we treat all constituent groups here on campus. Thank you.
Dr. Lacy mentioned the LAO report and all the unfunded FTS. And this graph on the first page of that, I just want to tie in, we received from the chancellor's office news within the last couple of days that we will receive an additional $307,000 of revenue to fund additional FTS. So it's available at the state level and so we've been notified and we'll build that into our budgets and share that news. So I just want to let you know today. That's it.
Thank you. So we're continuing rollout for student equity efforts. Funding request packages went to everybody, all employees on campus last week, inviting requests for funding for special projects under student equity. The Developmental Education Committee had a very good discussion, full committee attendance yesterday, we had a very good discussion about student equity and the process and also partnering on efforts that way. The student leadership took part in the March in March on Monday and Amna Jarra took the group up. We had a really great group and they reported that they were really glad to have the opportunity. It's It's always a valuable experience and getting there in the halls of government, and so we were very happy that the group was able to go this time. Dr. DeLong Chomiac, our Dean of Counseling, will be attending the Puente Administrators' Day next Thursday in Clermont, and this is the first time, and we're really happy with the fact that this program has been put together and that we'll be able to be represented and participating in that. We're, of course, very long time, the college has a huge, long history with Puente, but this is a new part for us to take part in, and so we're very pleased about what it will do in terms of helping our capacities. And then finally, I too want to compliment Student Trustee by way of commenting, Dr. Contreras shared with the Student Senate today that Mr. Flores Resendiz had talked to him about the importance of civility and looking at ways to promote that and promote dignity and respect within their operations and with the way we talk with each other and work with each other at the campus. And I appreciate that coming, especially coming from the insights of a student leader, it means a lot. So Dr. Contreras will continue that conversation with all of the groups throughout the student government, and that's my report.
Thank you. Just wanted to let you know that our next Safe Zone meeting is this Friday, and that continues to be well-received across campus, and that's due to the dedicated work of a small group, we're now getting larger group of individuals. So if anyone would like to do something Friday morning, let us know, and we can add you to the list. Also, as Dr. Lacy mentioned, this is Women's History Month, and you'll see that information on the website. And also, I appreciate everyone who attended, participated in, and helped organize the Black History Month activities. Also, you've already received information on the president forums for next week, so I encourage you to participate. Also, the forums will be videotaped and posted on our website, as well as the evaluation forum will be on the website, as well as a Survey Monkey forum for you to submit to us. We'll provide all that information directly to the board for when they interview candidates on March fifteenth at their special board meeting. And congratulations, Dr. Lacy, on the honor. You're welcome.
Yes, I also wanted to congratulate Dr. Lacy on the honor, and no further report. Thank you.
Moving on, we do have closed session. Closed session, we do have item twenty-six and twenty-seven. Item twenty-six is Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release, One Employee Under Government Code Section five four nine five seven. And then item twenty-seven is Conference with Labor Negotiator Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six. Item A is our agency representative, Dr. Gallardi, and Dr., I'm sorry, Mr. Stephen Adelson. And then the employer organization is C C F F and C S C A, as well as unrepresented employees, which are management and contract employees. And then Presidential Superintendent Compensation related to Presidential Search will be provided by Dr. Hernandez's designated representative. Also on the list is confidential employees, child development center teachers, instructional associates, short-term, temporary, and substitute staff. And so, Mr. Legal Counsel, is there anything else you need to add to that?
Not at this time.
Okay, with that, we'll go into closed session. No readout will be provided, there will be no readout on this particular items.